Paul, please prepare to post the college. Welcome, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a virginity and justice for all.
Please most of the others. Hugard, reform. Hugard dismissed. Miss it.
Thank you very much, and just as an added note, Asbury Methodist Church has actually been around longer than the city of Livermore. William Mendenhall donated the land for Asbury Methodist back in eighteen fifty, no, eighteen sixty-seven, and Livermore was founded in eighteen sixty-nine. So, thank you to Troop 900 for doing the Pledge of Allegiance for us. So with that, we move on to report of action taken in closed session. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. Now moving on to proclamations and presentations, we would like to confirm the advisory body appointments and administer the oath of office. So I would like to ask, or first off, I need a motion to approve David Whitman for Commission of the Arts, Marty McFadden, Livermore Housing Authority, Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, youth members Sarah Ansell, Danica Bellucci, and Robert Purcell. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. So I'd ask the folks whose names I just read to please come up for the oath of office. Thank you for stepping up and volunteering your time. This is one of the reasons that Livermore is the remarkable community that it is, is because we have people that are willing to step up and volunteer their time to serve the community and to make it a better place. Thank you. Please.
Aye, Robert Purcell.
I solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
Of a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
All right, once again, thank you for dedicating your time. All right, so with that, we go on to our Beautification Committee Annual Update, followed by the presentation of the 2018 Beautification Awards. With that, we have Tyler Olson, our committee chair, presenting the annual report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. As you mentioned, Tyler Olson, Chair of the Beautification Committee. I would like to thank the council for inviting the committee to give its annual report for 2018. I'd also like to thank the rest of the committee, those who are present and those who are unable to attend, Paul Eldridge, Vice Chair, Barbara Hickman, Susan Lewis, and Kathy Norfleet. I'd also like to thanks city staff liaison, Jeff Schaefer, and Roberta Matthews, as well as city arborists Joe Prime and Tim Mesa. Without their assistance, what we do on the committee wouldn't be possible. The committee's major accomplishments for 2018 include organizing the design and painting of murals along the pedestrian path underneath Stanley Boulevard, along with the help from committee members, in particular Susan Lewis and Kathy Norfleet, as well as the Los Positas Community College Art and Design Club and community members. Committee also undertook its annual park review, where committee members visit and inspect the city-maintained parks and report our findings back to city staff. Committee for its Arbor Day presented, did Arbor Day presentation to all the city's second grade classes and put together over a thousand goodie bag handouts for second graders. And the committee co-hosted with the Water Resources Division, a booth at the farmer's market in an effort to promote our beautification awards and to hand out graffiti fighter kits. And the committee sponsored, of course, this year's beautification awards. Nominee applications were received from all areas of Livermore and received a good representation of the city. Tonight, the committee is requesting the council present four awards as item 2.03 of the agenda. If we can dim the lights. So on the screen, we have before and after pictures of this year's beautification award winners. If we go to the next slide, please. First award winner is Montage Community. They replaced existing landscaping with drought-tolerant landscaping and native plants. They also improved drainage, added mulch to retain moisture, and improved their irrigation system. So if you move to the next slide, we have a couple more pictures of Montage Community. And then we have one more. Our next award winner is Mark and Claire Mylinkovich. So they installed all new landscaping to go with their new home. It included drought-tolerant plants with trees, mulch to retain moisture, and irrigation system as well. So go to the next slide. Mark Goralca removed his front lawn and replaced it with trees and other drought-tolerant landscaping to create an inviting and attractive front yard. The final award winner is Kerry McGahy, who added trees, flowers, and drought-tolerant grass, ornamental grasses, as well as brick walkway, patio, and harbor. So at this point, I think we'd want to call up this year's beautification award winners. So we'll present them with. Okay, so first, we'll call up Montage Community.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Well done.
Yeah. Well, you got it. Let's get you over to the side.
Next, we have Mark and Claire Mylinkovich.
She's right in the middle here. Mark, congratulations.
Next, we have Mark Goralca.
Goralca family here, great. It's a group effort.
I had to put up with it.
And then Kerry McGahy.
Don't forget my husband, Stuart. He kept the roses.
Just to help. Congratulations. All the work paid up.
And Mayor Marshawn, we also have signs for them.
Oh, absolutely.
So we can get everybody in on a group picture. We have some signs.
In two weeks, you'll have the only signs up.
Get the whole group here. Nice work.
So again, thank you so much for making the city a more beautiful place. So greatly appreciated, all the time and effort that went into that, and also, in many cases, making it more drought tolerant. So, great, thank you very much. And so ends the fun portion of the evening. No, it's all fun. This is what we enjoy doing. This is the Halloween edition of the Livermore City Council. So with that, as we move into the Citizens Forum, these are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on anything at the Citizens Forum. But with that, I would like to call up Greg Scott, Joshua Lane, and David Kent. Mr. Scott.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marshawn, Livermore City Council, City of Livermore staff, those in videoland and those in this chamber. I am Greg Scott. I thank the city of Livermore for any action or actions taken to allow for a homeless man, Herb Gosse, to have his dog released to adoption. Mr. Gosse spoke at the city council community forum in the last meeting of September. Marla is doing fine, and Mr. Gosse has daily visitation privileges. I have not met the city of Livermore's animal control officer, however, I have every impression that the animal control officer had the dog's welfare at heart and followed her job requirements to the letter. I do not discount the actions by the city in regard to the taking of the dog. What is disturbing to me is how many resources and how much time has been spent on Marla, the Belgian Malinois dog, and how little resources has been put into Herb Gosse, the homeless human being. Mr. Gosse has stated that all he and Marla need now is a home. On Tuesday, October 9th, they attended the homeless workshop put on by the city of Livermore and hosted by the Human Services Commission. In the workshop, there was a safety net list for a focus group. Housing was listed first. At the behest of a city council candidate who is on board with what the city is doing in regard to homelessness, housing was removed from the safety net list because it was confusing with being listed on another list. I kid you not, Livermore, housing was removed from the safety net list at the city of Livermore's homelessness workshop on the needs of the homeless. How absurd can it get? I attended the safety net focus group and listened to a city of Livermore staff person whose key words I heard were eventually and patience. I asked the focus group that if they were under no roof for the night, had no bed for the night, and had no private bathroom for the night, and heard the words eventually and patience, how would they feel? The response from the group was stone-cold silence. There is little understanding of homelessness here. There is little understanding of homelessness by the city of Livermore's Human Services Commission. How could housing or shelter not be the top necessity for homeless as part of the safety net? My friend Carl Fainer, Grenada Heights Class of 1974, was waiting for eventually. He had patience. He lived in his truck for ten years. He died from being homeless for so long. Eventually and patience did not work out for him. The city of Livermore construes spending gobs of money on the homelessness issue with obtaining significant results relative to the scope of the problem. Please wake up to this, Livermore, for homelessness is an inequity. Inequity leads to instability. This was realized by Aristotle of democratic Athens in the fourth century before the birth of Christ. There is not the imperative and sense of urgency that is needed on the homelessness issue here in Livermore.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Joshua Lane, David Kent, Connie Naylor.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Joshua Lane here. On July 16th, I pulled papers to run for candidacy for mayor of Livermore. And in doing that, I signed a contract that I would do my best to have a good faith-run campaign and keep it positive. I have tried very hard not to slander or libel or say anything negative, but keep my campaign on the positive approach on recognizing issues with Livermore and coming up with solutions. I find it disturbing that multiple people have contacted me, giving me messages of Mayor Marshawn contacting these people and slandering myself and my daughter. And I quote, "Do you want someone to be responsible for Livermore if they refuse to be responsible for their own child?" Now, with all due respect, sir, you don't know anything what I've gone through with my daughter, and all you've seen is me being affected by the poor leadership here, which is why I have to run for mayor. The Livermore, people of Livermore deserve better leadership. So I encourage people to vote Joshua Lane for Livermore Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. David Kent, Connie Naylor, Brooke Witherspoon.
Good evening, David Kent. The last several weeks have been very filled up with social media, emails, conversations, everywhere I go, about the comments of one of the council candidates, Brett Seiler, as they relate to things said in the not-so-distant past. Statements such as that Jews are responsible for the violence in the Middle East, views that Barack Obama is responsible for racism in America, views that basically Vladimir Putin should be our president because he takes unilateral fascist actions that many of us find abhorrent. What hasn't happened in this whole dialogue is where has the independent been on this? These email threads, these Facebook posts are nothing new. They've been known since the candidate appeared. Nobody was talking about them when no one was talking about this candidate. But when this candidate was endorsed by Friends of Livermore, he became a much bigger subject. Yet, the paper has refused to cover this, which is clearly the biggest issue of this campaign, has said nothing on this. They haven't printed any letters to the editor. They haven't reported on the news stories, yet it continues to be a major issue. And so I have to ask the question is, when will the independent cover this story? And why haven't they rescinded their endorsement of Brett Seiler? Friends of Livermore itself today rescinded its endorsement, under the pressure of so many community people who are signing letters that are circulating rapidly, that this Livermore cannot be a safe harbor for this kind of hate speech. Yet, nothing is being done. The Sierra Club, last week I contacted them. They said they vetted the candidates, checked the internet, took questionnaires, and now they're evaluating if new, more appropriate action has to be taken. Yet, as of seven o'clock tonight, they still have not rescinded their endorsement of Mr. Seiler. So I ask, you know, where is the independent on this? We have had to pass the hat among private citizens to sign a letter just to put a spotlight on these statements. That's the job of the free press. Yet, we're putting our own personal funds in to run advertisements just to let the voters know what is happening in this community, and what is being said, and by whom, and how that impacts California, how it impacts Livermore. We cannot be a safe haven for hate here in Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Connie Naylor, Brooke Witherspoon, John Stein.
Good evening. I'm Connie Naylor, and I'm here regarding the Springtown Open Space. First off, we'd like to thank you for the progress that's been made out there so far. We really like the landscaping, the roses, and so forth. My neighbors and I are looking forward to working with you and the new city council members on future improvement, but what we would like to know is how we can help with funding, and we would like direction on how to go forward to obtain that funding. We realize that there is limited money at this time, but we'd like to know what we can do to help out. At least through this winter, we're hoping to, to maybe at least get some gravel paths out there, so we can at least walk in that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Brooke Witherspoon, John Stein, Evan Branning. Take your time, you're fine.
Good evening, guys. My name's Brooke Witherspoon. I'm the owner of the First Street Ale House, but I'm also a very proud board member of a local nonprofit called Rooms of Hope. At Rooms of Hope, we create dream bedroom makeovers for local children battling life-threatening illnesses, and I'm here to tell you about a fundraiser that we have coming up. On November 3rd, we will be kicking off the Ale House's 11th Annual Beard Growing Contest. This is an opportunity for our local members, or anyone for that matter, to come together and support some families in need. How it works is on November 3rd, we have men, or women if you feel so inclined, arrive at the Ale House at 8:30. I do a presentation on what Rooms of Hope is. Every supporter gets their own personalized fundraising page, and for the next six weeks, they reach out to friends and family for sponsorships on their beard. This event culminates on December 15th in an event that we call our Beards and Brews Event. We have live and silent auction, food, bands, beverages. Over the past 11 years, we've had increased participation. Last year, we had about 115 men grow their beards, and over six weeks, we raised well over $100,000 for Rooms of Hope. We're hoping to even surpass that this year. One of the children that we're raising funds for is an eight-year-old Livermore boy named Alberto, who is fighting brain cancer. So if anyone is interested in either being a beard grower, or helping me spread the word, or becoming involved with Rooms of Hope, I've left some informational flyers on the side table. Also, we have an Eventbrite page with a lot of information. You can go to the Ale House Facebook page, or I'm everywhere, so you can just ask me if you see me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. So that's, what are the dates on that again?
November 3rd is the beard growing kickoff, but December 15th is the community celebration, and we hold that at the Veterans Hall, so.
And is there a website that they can access for that?
Yeah, if you go to the Ale House Facebook page, there's links to everything. And I'm not just promoting my business. That's just where I put the things. Awesome, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. John Stein, Evan Branning, Carl Wintey. Mr. Stein.
Good evening, John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I was wondering, as the early voting and the vote by mail gets earlier and earlier, I was wondering if the city website and the city ordinance could be changed so that reports on contributions and expenses could occur earlier to match the elections. Right now, it's actually after the first day of voting by mail or in person. So if you could move it up to the 1st of October, rather than, I think it's right now the 15th of October, it might be better. Also, I was wondering, I've been personally called by three separate polls. Those are expensive because they have you on the phone for about a half hour in some cases, and I was wondering how those costs are reported by the various campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Just a quick question to the city clerk as far as the dates. I know some of those dates are set by the state, and so you provide any enlightenment on the dates of the possibility of moving some of those dates?
You're correct. Most of the dates are set by the state. Livermore has one additional requirement for an additional campaign filing. That's a little later, November 1st.
Okay.
And that's in the campaign ordinance.
Okay, but the rest are set by the state. Okay, all right, thank you. And as far as the notification of who's paying for the polls and the like, you have the 460s and the expenses pages from the different organizations on the website. So you just go to the city clerk's site and get the information from your site.
That's correct, Mayor. We also have hard copies available in the clerk's office if people prefer, or they can go online and see the results, the reports.
Very good, thank you. Evan Branning and Carl Wintey. Mr. Branning.
Good evening. My name is Evan Branning, and I'm speaking on my own behalf right now. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council, mayor, and staff, as always, for the hard work that they've done for the city. I think you've done an excellent job with reaching out to the community, trying to help everyone you can, and really making sure that you hear from the people in this community. And as part of that, there's actually, I sit on the Human Services Commission, and I wanted to talk about the workshop that we just had and the one that is coming up. So we just had a workshop, I believe, about two weeks ago, that Mr. Scott did mention. It was, I understand his frustration, and I do hear him. I do agree that, you know, when you're living on the streets, hearing patients is not what you want to hear. But sitting on the other side of the table, I also see a lot of the issues where we're constrained on, the city's constrained on how it can spend money, how it allot's the money, and just how much money there is. I'm hoping that this workshop was a good opportunity where we can take some first steps, where the Human Services Commission and the city council can start moving forward on reassessing how we're going to address homelessness in the city. I think this has been excellent, and I want to give Claudia Young a huge shout-out for helping arrange this and really making it a meaningful turning point, I think. With that said, there is another one coming up. The first one was focusing on homelessness, the homelessness issue in Livermore. The next one coming up is focusing on seniors, health, youth, and employment, which is a much broader category or set of categories. But it will be on November 13th here at seven o'clock. I hope that some of you will be able to make it, as well as I hope that the community will be able to make it. And most importantly, anyone who either is utilizing the services or could use services from the city, come out. It's a good opportunity to hear from the Human Services Commission, to meet people who are providers, to meet people who can hopefully help you, and also to give us, on the Human Services Commission and through us, the city council, more direction and more insight on how we can help the problem. A lot of innovative ideas were brought up, and I believe some of them are being discussed soon, and have been, some have already been brought to the council at this point. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work on this problem. I'm looking forward to hopefully us moving quickly and getting solutions out there. I understand the issues, and I understand Mr. Scott's frustration, and I share it. I hope that we are able to move as quickly as possible, and thank you very much for what you have done.
Thank you, Mr. Branning, and thank you for your service on that commission. Carl Wintey, so far our last speaker.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Bobbs, Steve, Mr. Roberts, thank you for what you do, Mr. Alcala, thank you for what you do. All the city staff continue to be awesome. The more I dig in, the more I recognize what a well-run city we have, top to bottom. You did listen in a thankless task, and there's obviously lots of stuff going on. Evan Branning for giving your time to Health and Human Services, like listening here. Amen. Greg Scott, like, you're right, man, the crew, the city that doesn't take care of those in need most, and so we support this. I want to get behind it. I appreciate what you're doing because we want to continue to make that better. There is a growing problem out there, no doubt about it. John Stein, I'm getting the reports to make. John Stein on getting the reports to match, you know, the polling cost and how it goes. Those reports are out there, we know whose name's on it. Jean King has paid for most of it thus far, we know how much each of those things have cost. Where did Jean get her money? And the world wonders, it's a lot that she's throwing at it. David Kent reiterating that no one has been talking about Brett Seiler in the comments, had been out there for a while. The Independent, step up and just report, right, report. But is it really a newspaper or is it an advocacy publication? So I think we sort of know the answer to that because it's been there. The Friends of Livermore unendorsed Brett Seiler, and they said, "Put your vote behind Rosemary Barge." Rosemary Barge stood right here and said, "The plan is awesome." The city council listened and did a good job. She commented the plan, she commented the council. So if the Friends of Livermore are going to change and go to Rosemary, they're going to pull back the referendum that was referending a sort of obscure language change within the specific plan that actually took away BART coming into downtown. It took away the 10-story theater, it took away 420 housing units. You guys took that away! And now they're referending it to get it back in? Yet they're claiming 84 houses is not, like 120 is too many? Our generation needs a place to live! And there's a financial impact to it, as you showed, Mr. Warner, last time. You talked about like, there's a financial impact to this as well. But never mind the fact, they supported 420, you turn around and you scream bloody murder at 120? Going down to 84? Our generation needs a place to live. Joshua Lane, thank you so much for your service to this country. My sister, I mean, excuse me, my cousin, married to an ex-marine, they have one dog named Semper, one dog named Fidelis. And so it's through and through. And to stay positive out there, I look forward to sitting down with you, my man, because I've done a lot of background into your businesses and the likes, into what's back there. And fundamentally, with all love and respect, my man, you ain't qualified to be mayor of this town. And that's that, and so we can follow it up later. You say you need leadership, we got leadership. Continue doing what you're doing. Thank you for standing up, looking at the breadth of the population out there and taking that feedback and listening, right, and listening. So the incumbents have been doing a great job, we should endorse them. City staff doing a great job. Mr. Roberts, you're responsible for a lot of that, again.
Thank you very much for all the comments tonight. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have, okay, so a couple of comments. What I'd like to do is, let's see, 4.01, 08, and 111. Okay, so I have cards for 4.08, 4.01, and 4.11. So what I'd like to do is, can I get a motion for 4.02 through 4.07, and then 4.09 and 10? So we'll pass those, and then we'll go back and hear the comments.
So I'll move, we accept 4.02 through 4.07, 4.09, and 4.10 on the consent calendar.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second about Councilmember Spodowsky, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Mr. Scott, 4.08, and this is the resolution appropriating $450,000 in unexpended fiscal year 16, 17, 17, 18, housing and human services grant funds. Mr. Scott.
Yes, resolution appropriating $450,155 in unexpended fiscal year 2016, 17, and fiscal year 2017, 18. And I'm hearing constraints. By presentation to Human Services, the meeting before last, the county of Alameda, point-in-time count for homeless in Livermore was 243. 243 out there, by point, town, and count, there must be a lot more, and yet we have unexpended funds. And yet we hear about these constraints as if, you know, we have the funds. We hear the platitudes of, you know, we don't have enough resources. It seems like empty platitudes because here's the resources, unexpended, and people are suffering out there, people are dying out there, I witnessed that personally. And I hear over and over what can't be done. Like, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that you tried the parking lot idea, and it didn't work. Well, it's funny because you have CityServe under contract to the city for $100,000, and their poster boy, they spent over $3,000 on him on motel fees and put him in a program for trucking at Tri-Valley One Stop for five weeks. Tri-Valley One Stop, by the way, I don't think got any grant funding. And he got a job, yay! And of the ABCs of homelessness, autonomy, yeah, he got a job, yay! Autonomy, a pathway to self-reliance. C, he's contributing probably tax dollars. B, belonging. Well, he might be happier in the lark, but he's living in that truck. So the city of Livermore paid for this guy to live in a semi-truck. If he parks in Livermore, where does he park? But you can't make a self-governed parking area work for so many that's out there that are working and living in their cars. Reductio ad absurdum by the city of Livermore. So I really don't understand the constraint factor, I suppose, when there's so many unexpended funds and so many people are suffering and dying.
So one of the things that I read recently is that there were over $2 billion in unexpended state funds that were tied up in the counties because they couldn't figure out how to spend the money because of the constraints that had been put on them by the county. I'd like to ask Claudia Young to perhaps elaborate just a little bit on that because, just because there are a lot of hoops that we have to go through to meet the state and local requirements. And yes, as I said, the state was sitting on $2 billion in housing funds and $2.5 billion in mental health funds, which still haven't been released. We're trying to get those funds released, but it's been very difficult. So Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So let me clarify the funds that are before you today. So these funds have very specific parameters around them. When you look at the Human Services Facility Fee Funds, those funds can only be used for facilities. So in this case, you have Access Dental Clinic, which is a facility. The INLU funds can only be used for activities related to affordable housing. So typically, they're used for development, but in this case, we've, you know, kind of found a place to do our outreach. For our federal funds, the home funds, we can only use them for development or, in this case, for tenant-based rental assistance. Because we don't have a lot of home funds, we choose to put them into tenant-based rental assistance, which is rental subsidies for our homeless. And the only reason we're able to use CDBG coupled with the home funds is because the regulations allow us, if we're doing a home-funded project or program, we can actually pay for operations with CDBG funds. Other than that, we would not be able to use the CDBG funds for rental subsidies. We have a very small pool in CDBG, it's only 15% of our entitlement, so it's very, very small, and, you know, we try to look for different ways of combining funds. So that's what you have for you, everything has a parameter around it.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Councilmember Carling.
Yes, I understand your point. I mean, it's a certain color of money that can only be spent certain ways, but it is a little concerning, I think, as to why is it unspent? Irrespective of how or what it's supposed to be spent on, why hasn't it been spent? And why do we, I mean, I guess I understand why we have to re-approve it, but why haven't they spent the money if they have it?
So if you look at the specific programs or projects, the Tri-Valley Haven, the 283, which is the majority of the 450, is actually for the rehabilitation of the shelters. So it's for both Shiloh and Sojourner and the administrative building. So there, we had a little bit of trouble getting a consultant on board because it's such a small project, it's very unique. We had a little bit of trouble getting a consultant to actually help Tri-Valley Haven. So now they found a consultant, and they're moving forward, and will be spending the funds within the next year. So that will go quickly. The dental clinic, the dental clinic, we were paying for feasibility to see where we can find a place for the dental clinic. So that's one reason why it took long. Now, they've found a place, and now they're moving forward, and they'll be spending down the funds. For the tenant-based rental assistance, so these funds, because of our rental market and we don't have enough affordable units, these funds are a little bit harder to spend. So Echo Housing does a great job of really engaging landlords and really vetting the tenants that are going to go into the units. The idea of this program is that after two years, you're able to pay for the rent without any subsidies. So as you can imagine, to get to that point, you have to do a lot of work, a lot of planning, which Echo does with the tenants. But these funds are harder to get out because there's not enough units. We want to make sure that at the end, they're able to afford it. So finding units makes it a little bit difficult. Echo is really conservative in planning ahead, they don't want to enroll a lot of people because then they're subsidizing portions of rents, so they want to make sure that they're conservative. So they will typically come back and ask for a carry forward. And then for the Abode Homeless Outreach, for their 16, 17 funds, this was the first year of this program, so they had a little bit of difficulty retaining staff and really getting up to capacity. So within the last year, they've worked to do that, and now they've become really stable, they have stable staff, and they're able to move forward. They were able to spend down their 17, 18 funds. So for 18, 19, what we decided is, let's spend down the $50,000 that we had allocated for 16, 17, instead of putting new money so that we can use our new money for other things.
Okay, well, I appreciate all the, whatever pressure you can apply to move these things forward, because per Mr. Scott's point, you know, these people are in need, and the more we can do to help implement and integrate some of these folks into some of these programs, the better off they'll be, and we will too. So, thank you.
Any other questions? And just to underscore that, because you mentioned Sojourner and Shiloh, and there's Shepherd's Gate, and Tri-Valley Haven, and the Homeless Refuge, there is need throughout the entire region for these facilities, for the homeless, the disadvantaged, and the abused. But because of our strong faith-based community and Livermore's sense of generosity, Livermore is the only city in the Tri-Valley that has facilities for the disadvantaged population. Now, every city has a need in the Tri-Valley, but only Livermore provides, the community of Livermore, not the city of Livermore, but the community of Livermore provides resources for the disadvantaged, the homeless, and the abused. And we are the only city in the Tri-Valley that does that. And I think that we, as a community, should be very proud of that because we are stepping up. And this is a tremendous, it's a real problem, and I admit that. And it's not something that, it's going to take a region, and when you have, I think one of the most troubling things is when you have people that are homeless in Livermore that have family in Livermore, family living in Livermore, and yet there are members of those families that are homeless. And if families have a difficult time solving homelessness within their family unit, city government is not going to be able to take the place of family. So it's a very difficult problem, and it's something that we continue to wrestle with, and we will continue to work on it, and we're speaking to it later on this evening. But it's going to take a regional and community effort to continue to move the needle on this one. So, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Young. Okay, 4.01 and 4.11, that is the minutes, and also the resolution for the physio control, which is life-pack defibrillators. Mr. Winty.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I forgot to thank those in uniform, have put a vest on to go to work. Mr. Chief, thank you for what you do. Again, all the council, all y'all continue to do a good job. I tried a social experiment today, and I put 4.01 through 4.11, but I decided it got to come up on the table. I wanted to talk on all of them, but I didn't want to put a card in and waste those three minutes on all of them, but just to come up one more time and say thank you for the process of good government, right? The will of the people, not the whim of the people. There's redundancies, and there's just a slowness to it at times, right? How can we have people out there that are living on the street, that are hungry, and there's 500,000 bucks that we got to pay for because we couldn't get it done? So those that are there, Branning, thank you. Mr. Scott, being in there, the community coming together to take advantages of these, to take advantage of the money that's there, to put it to work for our community. So that's got to be just horribly frustrating at times, of the people, for the people, by the people, and it is a process, and good government is a process. So across all of those, this is meant to be across all that resolution, to the staff, how much work goes into it. Mr. Alessio, you're not here right now, but how much goes into all of these reports, all of this paperwork, to make sure that we have an open and transparent government? I thank you for what you do, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winty. All right, that's the end of the, oh, wait, nope, nope, excuse me, I need a motion on 4.01, 4.08, and 4.11.
Move approval of 4.01, 08, and 11.
A second?
A second, aye.
Second by Councilmember Coumber, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passed unanimously, thank you. Moving on to public hearings, 5.01, this is the ordinance establishing district-based elections for council members.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sarah Bunting, your city clerk. The item before you tonight is the final public hearing regarding the transition from at-large elections to district-based elections for council members.
I think this is the first time we've had a presentation from the city clerk.
It's been a while.
Hey, very cool.
Staff is recommending the city council introduce the ordinance amending the municipal code to establish the district-based elections for council members for 2020 and setting the sequence for districts in future elections. To give you a little brief background, an overview of where we've been, in May, the city received a letter from a law firm alleging violations of the California Voting Rights Act of 2001, and while denying that the existing system was a violation of the law, given the low threshold for the alleged violations, in July, the city council voted to transition to district-based elections to comply with the CVRA. Four public hearings were held to receive public testimony, and the city also engaged in public outreach efforts to inform the community and solicit input, resulting in verbal and written testimony from the public, and then draft maps were considered. After considering the public testimony, the city council directed staff and the city's independent demographer to prepare at least three draft maps, and the criteria used in drawing the districts is on the slide. Initially, five draft maps were prepared for the council, and three maps from the public were submitted, and three additional variations were considered later in the process after additional direction from the city council. On October 8th, the council selected Plan Lime as the final district map, and selected districts 3 and 4 to be on the ballot in the November 2020 election, and districts 1 and 2 on the ballot in 2022. The mayor will continue to be elected at large. Shown on the screen is Plan Lime, the final map that was selected by the council from among the alternatives for reasons such as balanced population, compactness, and following the natural boundaries such as the Arroyo. The demographer has made minor corrections to this map, such as making sure the lines followed the same side of the roads, and ensuring that District 2 and 3 followed, actually, I-580 rather than North Front Road. These corrections were consistent with council's directions and did not impact any of the Next steps will include introducing the ordinance tonight, adopting the ordinance on second reading in November, implementing two councilmember seats in 2020 and two councilmember seats in 2022. Future redistricting efforts will take place following the next federal census, which is in 2020. is in 2020, and the changes would be implemented for the 2022 election. And with that, staff is available with any questions.
Questions for staff?
Nope.
Very good, thank you. There is a story in the news, I forgot to bring the slide, but it was the North Carolina jurisdiction district maps. And we struggled over a couple of triangles and corners on this. And I advise anybody to pull up the North Carolina gerrymandering map because it's absolutely astounding the way these little fingers go out throughout the state. And it's, we had a tremendous process here. Here it really worked, but that was a great example of how things don't work. So I do have one card. Carl Winty?
He's gone.
He's gone? Okay. Maybe that was three-point-oh-one, but it's five-point-oh-one. All right. Well, in that case, I'll open the public hearing and then we'll now close the public hearing. You come back in, did he? Okay. All right. Close the public hearing. Any discussion or comments from the council? Do you have a motion?
I'll move we accept staff recommendation.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Werner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to five-point-oh-two, this is the disposition and development agreement for the downtown core commercial sites.
All right. Thanks, Mayor and members of the City Council. So...
Chris Ponto is going to be presenting the staff report tonight?
Yep. So back in January, City Council approved a new downtown plan, which included new commercial retail buildings that will expand Blacksmith Square and help frame Stockman's Park. And so they're located here on the map. The city then issued a request for qualifications for the commercial component of the plan and ultimately chose to move forward with Red Bear Property Management. Red Bear is an experienced development company, which has been responsible for the development and operation of a number of high-quality, successful properties in both Livermore and Pleasanton. The city and Red Bear have now negotiated a disposition and development agreement, which establishes the terms for the sale and development of the city-owned site to Red Bear and the responsibilities of each of the parties. The major points of the DDA include, like I said, the sale of the city-owned property to Red Bear. And then Red Bear would be responsible for constructing and operating approximately eighty-six-hundred square feet of commercial retail space. And that would be designed in a manner that is compatible with Blacksmith Square and actively interfaces with Stockman's Park. Red Bear will also help fund the ongoing maintenance for Stockman's Park and has agreed to incorporate a public restroom facility into the development that will serve both the retail customers and visitors to the park. Lastly, the DDA includes a scheduled performance, which gives Red Bear just over twenty-six months to complete the development, allowing the commercial uses to be constructed and opened around the same time as Stockman's Park. So staff is recommending the City Council direct staff to file a notice of determination consistent with the provisions of CEQA and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the DDA and other documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of the DDA. So that includes staff's presentation and we're available for questions. And we also have Mike Madden here from Red Bear Property Management.
Okay, questions for staff at this point? With Representative from Red Bear, care to speak, Mr. Madden?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, staff, thank you very much. I'd just like to acknowledge some of what's already been acknowledged. Carl does a wonderful job of that. And another gentleman addressed something earlier, but anyway, it came from the citizens of Livermore who filled this chamber and started defending Blacksmith Square from a number of boogeymen that were out there going to tower over it and take it over. From there, we kind of combined resources and energies with the Stockmans. So I'd like to thank them for their, it's kind of their creativity and willingness to, again, put their resources forward to create something, you know, for the downtown. So the Stockman were really largely responsible for this. David and Darcy Kent, Darcy with her creativity and David with his energy, kind of got a ball rolling. It kind of came my way. And then I'd also like to really acknowledge council and staff. And the gentleman earlier talked about, you know, government comes at us and says, you know, tells us all the things that we can't do. But this deal and this project, as it goes forward, is an example of what we can do. And Carl says it better than I do, but this is a well-run city and this is a well-run deal. And like I said, the people over here at this table really stepped up and got it done to where we were in a position to move forward and we're excited to do so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. And who would have imagined that a muffler shop would have become one of the most beloved sites in the city of Livermore? And as I said, it started out as a blacksmith shop and then we just turned into a different kind of horsepower. Excellent. Okay, any further questions for the staff and the applicant? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Cards, Ken Bradley, David Kent, David Rounds. Mr. Bradley.
I sort of questioned the timeliness of this in that the DDA has not really been available all that long for review. In fact, the current copies don't even have the exhibits attached to it. So that's one comment. Second item is the purchase price is fifty thousand dollars. I remember when the city purchased a twenty-five-foot wide lot downtown for half a million, carefully guarded it with a chain-link fence. And price seems a little bit low. Of course, to compensate for the low price, the city's going to give the developer credits of over eight-hundred thousand dollars as an additional gift, I think. I didn't see anywhere in here where it mentioned the landscape maintenance district, which if they do develop, they should be subject to. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bradley. David Kent, David Rounds, Kalin Kent.
Hello again. And I would like to pick up what was earlier said, I think by the mayor, that Blacksmith Square really is the visual representation of Livermore. Both its origin as a cow town and being a blacksmith shop, its evolution into a highway passing through our first street and it being an automotive store, and now it really being a very beloved gathering space that features, you know, craft wineries, breweries, and hopefully we'll see some distilleries come in there. It is really a visual history depiction of Livermore. And I would have to argue with the first speaker, I think fifty thousand dollars is probably fifty thousand dollars more than what could have reasonably been expected. This is only eighty-six-hundred net square feet of development. The amount of time that Red Bear, the Madden family, has personally put into this is going to greatly exceed any return. They're doing it because it's great for Livermore. It works hand-in-glove with Stockman's Park. Stockman's Park would not be properly defined as a village green and a wine country destination if we don't extend the historic brick buildings around this park. The provision of restrooms is an amazing, amazingly generous and much-needed amenity for all the visitors to Livermore, residents and tourists alike. And so I think we should not look a gift horse in the mouth. I think the fact that Red Bear is willing to take on a project that is such a marginally commercial project, but is so emotionally important for the people of this city, they should really be applauded and we should give our full support to this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. David Rounds, Kalin Kent and Darcy Kent.
Council, Mayor, staff, good evening. So I'm glad you all have chosen Red Bear for the retail development portion of this downtown plan. His company does just great work. Tonight, this item is on the agenda, even though the disposition and development agreement was not available to the public, if I understand it correctly, was not available to the council until today. I remember a few months ago when Vice Mayor Werner fast-tracked the retail project and gave the developer, Mr. Madden, a very tight timeline to complete their work. Why the hurry? I understand that build it quick and build it now is a popular position with some of Mr. Werner's supporters downtown and in the Unify group. That is not a good reason to rush the work. This retail development is not controversial. So what is the harm in giving it a couple of weeks so everyone can have a chance to review and study the information before you all move forward? On the more controversial, one of the more controversial issues, the housing, you didn't seem to have any problem moving that discussion until after the election. This timing issue seems even more important now that you know the referendum received almost nine-thousand signatures and is more than likely to be certified. So again, wouldn't it be prudent to give it a few weeks to see how the referendum shakes out? Give ample time for everyone to review the DDA and for the retail development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. Kalin Kent, Darcy Kent, Carl Winty.
So the first time I heard of the downtown plan and ever since, it's reminded me of the writing of a political philosopher who's made a huge difference in my life. And bear with me, I promise it all ties together. But this person is, wrote these words that I really strive to live by and as the years have gone by, I have realized are really necessary in our divisive times. The writer I'm talking about, her name is Hannah Orent, and some of you might know her and if you haven't, definitely read her work. It's amazing. She's probably most famous for covering the Nuremberg Trials as a journalist, where she faced and had to comment on some of the greatest evils of the human race, genocide, namely the Holocaust. But an idea that she really held firmly and that I've tried to really live my life by in, is embodied in our downtown plan and I keep coming back to that. And it's this idea of the polis, which of course is from ancient Greece, but specifically in our modern day as a coming-together place of many voices and perspectives and beliefs, a place for people to talk and be friends and specifically to be friends with people you disagree with or have different perspectives by. And I see this in our modern Blacksmith Square. And I know some people are like, oh, it's, you know, a place where you go and get a drink. But it's a place where you have conversation and the kind of life you see there is amazing. And then I see this plan where you're going to, at the site of this, have a science and society center specifically and the two theaters in a park honoring our stockman and our history and the sacrifice of the stockman made and the ranchers made in World War I. I see that same spirit of the polis and of this coming-together place in the plan. And then as well, affordable housing and having a place for our workers and my generation to live. I see it in having the hotel and having other people who don't maybe reside in Livermore coming and visiting and visiting our wine country. So the plan keeps on moving me and I keep coming back to Hannah Orent's words. But I sadly also see it a bit in the opposition, where I guess I see the opposite. And I see this desire to obstruct the plan in the park because they don't want the multiplicity of voices. They just kind of want one voice and this one perspective of Livermore, which they really treasure, but there's no compromising for them. And it's not about bringing a lot of people together, it's about one small group. And I feel like it's really shameful that that mission is also tied to a newspaper. Hannah Orent was a journalist and the newspaper is supposed to be a place of many voices. So I just, I urge the creation of, you know, this downtown plan in Stockman's Park to give lifeblood to this coming-together place. We already have a really great start at for diverse people here in Livermore. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Darcy Kent, Carl Winty, Evan Branding.
Mayor and council, I beg to differ with David Rounds. We have been waiting over eighteen years for this plan to move forward and we've been stymied at every turn because Friends of Livermore, the independent, they have very selfish needs, a very small voice, but they have a very loud voice because they have the paper. And I'm tired of the plans being stopped continuously just for their purposes. Stockman's Park has become a place of Livermore that we all cherish. And I'm glad we stopped the Friends of Livermore from destroying it. Their hotel was going to knock it down. This is a place where I discovered the Crowded Republic. I've become friends with the Stockman. I've become friends with downtown merchants, with the youth of Livermore that actually let an old lady like me hang with them. It's allowed me to have a beer with people that I would have never associated with in my normal walk of life because you all just kind of go to your own areas. But at Stockman's, well, at the Blacksmith Square, we all come together and we share a beer or a glass of wine or an appetizer, we listen to music. It is an incredible place that brings so many people from different walks of life together. And I thank you for cherishing it, for expanding it and allowing it to be the core of our new downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Carl Winty, Evan Branding, Jacob Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, I'm glad that everyone agrees that Red Bear is a great organization that knows how to get in and get it done and keep the character with what's there. Thank you, Mr. Madden, for, you know, sticking with the community and your family. While there's obviously lots of real estate owned in there, you all care deeply about community, community character and the likes, and I thank you for that. I salute you for that. You, your family, please tell your father hello. He's usually watching. What's up, Johnny Madden, if you're out there? Appreciate you and what you did. Kalin, what a great one, right, of Olivier Orent and just talking philosophical, bringing all things together. David Kent, reiterating, Blacksmith Square is a symbol that we all said was important to this, the community character of what we have and having the Stockman's deal that came in, yeah, came in late in the game and in the process, but you take advantage of what's here and that extension of it is what really everybody wanted. The price tag and the details of, you know, but the provisions for the bathroom, for getting it out there. At the end of the day, you know, the Mr. Madden, no dummy, not going to do things for free, but at the same time, going to do things like to make it work and to get it built and to have those amenities. We had, as I understand, exactly one person bid on this one and it's one reputable firm that everyone agrees can do a good job and get it done. So they're there. Now, the "don't rush it," you know, nothing should be rushed. And I'm assuming, Mr. Alcala, if there's anything about not having the information out on time, like the process of government and the rule of law should supersede. So don't know the answer to that, but we have had plenty of time, right? And there's a certain like continual, you know, continual effort by the Friends of Livermore to stop this, to slow this down. Don't rush through in the light of an election, yeah, okay. In the light of the nine-thousand or the eighty-eight, eighty-eight, what a great number y'all came to, eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight signatures, you know, collected with lies. These are lies that were told to me. The golf course downtown, this will stop that. This will stop the skate park within the golf course downtown. This will stop one million square feet of commercial building downtown. This plan needs to be stopped because there is zero open space. Everything, this was told to my face by your paid signature gatherers. Everything must be at least four stories tall. You must stop this plan. Sign here. There will be two motels, couldn't even say hotel, two motels. Further, there will be zero ADA parking. That was all told to my face. So yeah, you got the signatures, but let's talk about how you got them because that's, you know, there's something to it. So keep this going, like keep the process going, you know, do it well, do it right. Sorry not to be able to be here for the other one about the district elections, but just do it right, do it well. You guys do. Thoughtful city. Lastly, David Kent, with all due respect and love, like your wife is an old lady that I would like to have a drink with. that I would like to have a drink with.
And on that note, Evan Branning, Jacob Anderson, and Lisa Trumovich, good luck following up that one.
All right, so I'm Evan Branning, I speak for myself, and joy I get to be between Carl Winty's speech and Jacob Anderson, who's also a great speaker, so I will do my best here. So, there's a few things I wanted to say. So first of all, I wanted to comment on David Round's speech, which I wish I had gone before him because I could have given a speech for him. It has been the same one about this, the hotel, the park, the parking, every single item that has been on the agenda so far, it's been the same thing. The Friends of Livermore come up here and say, "We absolutely love what the city is doing, we admire everything that you have done, the Friends of Livermore adore all of this, except we only wish you would wait another five years, 10 years, 40 years." I don't know what their timeframe of waiting is, but it is wait, 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 wait. That is all the Friends of Livermore have proposed so far, is how can they stall this? The city has gone forward, and I want to thank you again. I want to thank all of you, but particularly I do want to thank Bob Warner for going out and making this a reality. It is from the city council's hard work that we are now seeing this move forward, and to say that we should wait again and again and again. It is simply trying to stop this from ever happening. So I do encourage you to go forward with this, I know that you will have a good deal with it. I come from an industry, this industry, from the hospitality industry. I don't talk about it too often with you, but I come from cooking, I've worked in the hospitality industry before. Mr. Madden is very well-respected for both the restaurants he has opened, as well as the other retail he has. He has done a great job for our community, he has done amazing things in our town, he is building an awesome addition to Blacksmith Square, which is already a huge success. I've gone to Blacksmith Square a lot, and on a personal note, I think I've met more of my friends at Blacksmith Square than I have anywhere else in town. I've met tons of people who I never thought I would meet, I have expanded my circle here, and it has been a great resource for me. To see it grow with someone who cares about what it will grow as, not just an opportunity to turn a quick buck, but to actually have a success where people can come together, where people can utilize Stockman's Park as well as Blacksmith Square, that will drive people to the other amenities that will serve the entire community is amazing. I have complete faith in Mr. Madden's ability to do this, I think that they will not just succeed at this, but they will excel. I've seen other properties that they've worked on, and when we see the designs and the final product, it is always amazing. So I encourage you highly, highly, to vote to move this forward, and I look forward to being able to grab a drink there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branning. Jacob Anderson, Lisa Trumovich.
So I would like to thank the Madden family for Blacksmith Square in the first place. It actually is a place very close to my heart. A really dear friend of mine worked, got a job at Tap 25, and I started to hang out there quite a bit, and I ended up getting a job at Tap 25, and it is where I've met some of my closest friends. I still go there quite often, more often than I probably should, but I go there quite a bit, and I have these great conversations, I have gotten to know people from all sorts of different walks of life. It is truly the essence of what Livermore is, it's a communal area where we can come together and have discussions, talk about life, be there for one another. It was a place where I met my, or not met, but it was a place where I took my wife on our first date, even. So it's really exciting to see Blacksmith Square become something even greater, a bigger communal space, and actually a space that can even bleed into Stockman's Park as well. I'm very excited about what's going forward, and I just can't wait to see it actually happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and last, Lisa Trumovich.
Hi, Lisa Trumovich, Livermore, California. So they say the proof is in the pudding. Well, we've already had a chance to taste the pudding, and it's fantastic. My understanding is that the Blacksmith Square concept was Mike Madden's brainchild. He created a space that brings people together, a relaxed, common ground, as we've heard many people testify to, while preserving a sense of our heritage, not an easy task. I trust that under his stewardship, this extension of Blacksmith Square will only enhance our community for the reasons already stated by Mr. Kent and others. Red Bear Inc. and city staff have experience collaborating on building portions of our very downtown. They know how to work together, they know how to get it done, and we've already had a chance to experience the product of their collaborations. So our city's experience with this team has been tremendous. I urge counsel to affirm the DDA and expansion of Blacksmith Square, and I trust, and I think we all can trust, that they'll be able to work out any details as they arise and blend up with a fabulous addition to our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the counsel. Comments from the counsel? Counselor Spodowski.
A quick question and then some comments. A question for the city attorney, how does the referendum affect this project, if at all, before, after, if it's certified? Could you give me a quick overview?
So as it stands now, the referendum has not qualified, so it has no effect. So if the referendum were to qualify, that would have an effect on the amendments to the downtown specific plan. Those particular amendments that were identified in that resolution is just those three particular sections. I'll turn it over to Mr. Spencer, Mr. Stewart, to talk about the commercial uses that are authorized, but I believe it's authorized under both.
So, under the current downtown specific plan, commercial retail is permitted in this location, so even if we were to go back to the existing rules, this use would be allowed here.
Okay, so pretty, pretty simple response, it's allowed no matter what happens, so that's great. My, my comments about the project, Mr. Madden referred to, you know, bogeymen that were out there that were threatening it, but they were very real bogeymen at one point, and the community really did rally around Blacksmith Square to literally save it from, you know, concepts that showed knocking down one of the buildings because it, quote, "wasn't historic", which you did a great job making it look historic, so everybody, I think, would have freaked, freaked out if we decided to go down that route and knock it down and essentially turn Blacksmith Square into a lobby or a, the driveway for the hotel. Also, there were designs with the three, four, five-story hotel right up against Blacksmith Square. That is the definition of overshadowing, so I, I believe that, you know, Blacksmith Square, it's one of the catalysts for our current plan, it really did bring the community together, it rallied people around the square, and we wanted to see you continue your good work. You've done a great job with the new areas of downtown, and you've done a great job with the old, and blending the two together has just been a specialty of you and everything that you've done in downtown, so I am very excited to see this move forward and to see what, you know, the, the final plan and what you come up with with extending this area that everybody loves so much, and, you know, I am excited about you operating the bathrooms, because that is something that, you know, in discussion with staff and in my experience, that's just something a city isn't really great at. I mean, we, we like to do nothing but stainless steel and very minimal amenities, and to have a nice bathroom downtown operated by the businesses, it's just, I think it will be an amenity for everybody. I mean, I think everybody right now runs to Panama Red, you know, and buys a bottle of water and asks for the code because they had to put it on the door, so, you know, I somewhat joke about that, but I'm just glad to see some of the, the, the aspects of this development agreement and how there's been a little bit of give and take to benefit everybody. So thank you very much for hanging in there, and I think everybody should be proud that we, we saved Blacksmith Square, extended Blacksmith Square, not just saved it.
Any additional comments, Counselor Carling?
Well, I wanted to thank, again, everybody for coming out this evening and, and providing their comments. It is curious to me, though, that one of the speakers said that, that this retail development wasn't controversial, but then asked in the next breath for us to wait. And I'm not sure that goes together, I'm missing the logic there, so I'm very happy with what Mr. Madden's proposing and the deal that we're making between Mr. Madden, Red Bear, and, and the city. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the downtown.
Counselor Coumber?
In with, in total agreement with the first two statements, but I just wanted to, in my 29 years here, I realize I'm a youngster compared to so many in this building right now, but I've seen Mr. Madden and Red Bear do some really amazing things downtown, things that I may have doubted when they were talked about, I've seen him work with the city to get it right, and I've seen him build it right. I have no problem with this, this development down there, I think it's the right vendor to take on this project, I know it'll be wonderful. I am not a frequenter of Blacksmith Square like you so much, I'm, I'm a coffee guy, okay? You'll find me up the street or down the street generally, but I'm down there a lot, and I appreciate just the look of that corner when I come into town from a long weekend out somewhere. Rushing it? Wow. Most of my lifetime here, I've been worrying about what's going to go downtown. I don't think we're rushing anything, I think we're making decisions, let's not confuse the two terms. We're making decisions about things that should have happened 20 years ago, and so we're, we're getting them done, and that's what's important, and this council has managed to push things forward when we've needed to. And I thank you all for your patience.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I would also like to thank, thank Mike and his family for what they've done for the city and what they are proposing to do for it, I think it's going to be a wonderful development. It's been a, a real pleasure talking with Mike about what could be done down there, it's been a few years that we've been talking, and we started out worrying about how to collect the garbage, and now we've got bathrooms, but we're gonna, we've got really wonderful buildings, and if you speak with Mike about his vision for how beautiful it's going to be, you know, we're, we're likely to have visitors come and comment on Blacksmith Square and this extension, it's going to be a real jewel for the city. And I would, I would also like to point out, absolutely, this is not being rushed, it's been carefully considered, negotiated, talked about, and there have been a number of people who have contributed to what is there. And, you know, there may be some that have refused to kind of want to get into it and maybe want us to wait, but the bulk of the community has contributed, has thought about it, and this is the right thing to do, and I just sincerely want to thank the Maddens for what they're doing for our community.
The question did come up, how did we arrive at the sales price? Now, there's been a lot of amenities that the city is looking for down there, so if you could just elaborate, how did we arrive at the, at the sales price?
So, we, we did start with an appraisal of the property, but then we, we also looked at some of the benefits that the property could provide, that the project could provide. So, the project is going to be making a contribution to Stockman's Park, to the community facilities and maintenance district for Stockman's Park, and it's a substantial contribution every year that's going to help to ensure the quality and the maintenance of that park, so that is a part of that. There were also the public restrooms that have been talked about this evening, the city not having to build our own public restrooms is a substantial savings, and, and there will be an ongoing cost to, to the Maddens to operate and maintain those facilities, so that was factored in as well. Then there were also some credits that were provided, so a previous development existed on the site, it used to be an old Lucky Shopping Center, and when you have an existing development and it comes to the ground, there are credits that are available from that previous use, from the fees that were paid by that previous development, and some, so some of those credits go to the project as well. So, we factored in the, the initial appraisal and then looked at some of these credits and benefits, and that's what drove the final price.
Okay, thank you, the question did come up. It's interesting, the, the comments they made about, about waiting, and I don't believe they ever took an actual position, but I remember that the, the leadership of the Friends of Livermore wanted to take, take Blacksmith Square to the ground, they wanted to put the hotel over there, and as we went through this very extensive outreach project, which Councilmember Carling and Vice Mayor Warner shepherded along, in the process of that outreach, we found out that, that this was a very beloved site, and it would have been a real tragedy had, had they rushed it and taken Blacksmith Square to the ground, because it turns out that Blacksmith Square and our town character is number two on the priority list, right after parking, and we found out the location of the hotel was priority number seven. So, Blacksmith Square is, is a much venerated and very beloved site, so much so that it's, it was, it was priority number two. I'm also interested, the, the chairman of Friends of Livermore got up and spoke about that we're rushing the project, and why are we rushing? It was interesting, I read a letter that he had written saying that the Friends of Livermore never supported 10-story buildings. 10-story buildings, and he is absolutely correct, they never supported 10-story buildings. Friends of Livermore supported only one 10-story building, and that was the 10-story Regional Theater. And they supported a 10-story, just one 10-story building in the downtown, and during the outreach program, we found out that nobody in the downtown wanted, nobody in the community wanted anything over four stories. And we also found out that the Friends of Livermore supported 420 housing units on this six-acre site. And then we found out from the community during our outreach that nobody wanted that. But what's interesting is that the Friends of Livermore wanted to rush the project through. They wanted to rush BART into the downtown, which we found out that 85% of the community did not want. But at that time, the Friends of Livermore wanted to rush the project through, they didn't want a vote because they said the city council representatives were elected to make those decisions for the city. And so I'm, I'm really quite surprised to hear the Friends of Livermore, who originally wanted to rush a 10-story ho, a 10-story apartment or apartment and theater in the downtown, now they don't want to rush anything, now they want to stop everything, and, and it just seems to me that it's because it's not what they want. But we had an extensive outreach project and program to find out what the community and what the residents did want, and I commend the work that the council members have done up here, because the downtown plan, when we ultimately came together on this summer, it was 5-0. It was a 5-0 vote from people that were, that the community was assured would listen to them. And we absolutely listened to what the residents had to say, we heard them, we put that into place, and we created this wonderful plan, and my, my gratitude and appreciation to Madden and to Red Bear for creating this wonderful iconic gathering place in the middle of our downtown, which is number two on the list of, of the priorities in the downtown, is to protect that character and protect Blacksmith Square, but had we listened to the Friends of Livermore and rushed that project, Blacksmith Square may have been taken to the ground. So I think we've gone through a very lengthy and reasoned conversation up here and with the community, and I think that this is a wonderful project, and the fact that it, it dovetails so nicely with Stockman Park, it extends all that, you're working together with the Science and Society Center and Livermore Shakespeare, and really, this is going to be a remarkable gathering place for the entire community, and that's exactly what we heard. More parking and a gathering place for the community, and this is exactly what we're going to have there, and I see no reason to delay this, because as Ms. Kent pointed out, we've been working at this for 18 years, and we've come together with a wonderful plan, and I'm ready to move ahead with it, and I would be willing to entertain a motion.
So I'll make the motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the DDA and other documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of the DDA with Red Bear and direct staff to file a notice of determination consistent with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act.
And I'll second.
A move by Councilmember, by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilmember Spodowski. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously, thank you very much.
And Mayor, one, one parting comment, the, the reason why they're saying that we're rushing it is, and I pointed this out at the last council meeting and a letter to the editor, is that that's going to be their narrative on Thursday, is that we're rushing it and we have secret deals, so this is nothing new, people making comments and then leaving, and then they're highlighted prominently in the article, so, not to spoil the clapping there, but I felt like I needed to point that out again.
The article's already written, you say?
No, I'm just saying that that's probably the angle.
So I would, I've just reminded- So, I would, I've just reminded you that right after the last election, Joan came to me and said, "Now, let's just approve my plan." And I said, "No, we're going to go through the outreach." She says, "Oh, no, we don't need to go through outreach. My plan is what I want, and let's do it." And she was not happy with the fact that we went through the outreach. So, that's just where we are, and we've done this very carefully. We did go through the outreach. We have listened, and we're on our way.
And I interrupted the clapping, so I'm going to, you know, I felt so bad about that, but I had to point that one last bit out. So, congratulations.
All right. We'll allow it this once, or for the big ones like that. Okay, well, very good. Thank you ever so much. Okay, with that, on to 6.01, which is the Council Norms and Values. These are relative to maintaining a community-wide focus as we go into a district-based election. Thank you very much, all. And thank you, Troop 900. Appreciate you guys being here. Thank you. Have a good evening. Hope you learned a lot about communication. It has to go both ways. Okay, norms and values. So, is the council normal?
That's not the question before me this evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. I'm Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager. At your July 23rd council meeting, council did direct staff to provide information about potential rules and/or guidance that could be incorporated into the city council norms and values about maintaining a citywide focus with the city's transition to district-based elections. Staff's research revealed that the majority of similarly sized cities that have made this transition have maintained their community-wide focus, but very few have actually formalized that focus into adopted resolution or policy. Staff did find one example, the city of Santa Maria, which is included in your packet this evening, that did adopt a resolution acknowledging the city's commitment to maintaining a citywide governance. Santa Maria has four established principles. I'll just share briefly with you. The first is that the council will continue to govern on an at-large basis, considering the needs and interests of the entire community. Any member of the council will help any member of the community who calls or contacts them. Third, professional management in a strong city manager form of government will continue, which includes resources being allocated on a needs and expertise basis, community-wide. And fourth, that current practices regarding councils, invitations to events and activities, and appointments to committees would remain as currently being practiced. This council's current norms and values is divided into four sections: council norms, council values, the role of the council, and council staff relations. Should council choose to include any policy regarding citywide governance, a new section called Principles of Governance could be added. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions you may have this evening.
Okay, questions for the staff? I have two cards. Going to open a public hearing. 6.01, Carl Winty and John Stein. Mr. Winty.
Council staff, when we went into this, no one was really, like, super excited about dividing the city, right? And went at it and just do it well, you know? Do it as effectively as possible and as openly as possible. I salute the staff, the consultants that were here, for doing a good job on it, you know? So, we want to continue, govern at large. We should celebrate that. Any council member from any citizen, by all means, professional management resources going through, not get it to my district. I was elected by my district. I want the funds here. I want my street to be better than yours, or my sidewalk to be better than yours. No, we want professional management resources all the way through, and the current practices of invitations and appointments. So, I strongly, strongly, strongly encourage you all to do this and to embody it when it comes into play, because putting words down doesn't mean anything if we don't embody that culture. We're going districts. The council represents Livermore. We want to continue it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winty. Mr. Stein.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. The previous speaker pretty well said it all. I mean, we had a requirement basically by the state that was unnecessary but unavoidable, and the staff essentially has researched it and made lemonade out of lemons. I think, you know, we do want a unified community that represents the entire city rather than the parochialism of districts. Although, we're being forced to have the elections on districts, these norms and values sort of emphasize the fact that we are a city, we are a community, not a federation of districts. So, I strongly support the council adopting some sort of norms and values that reinforce that. Also, in norms and values, since Halloween is coming up, I'm surprised you're not in costume.
I got my Halloween tie on, so that's costume that they get at the council meeting.
I wanted to wear my Big Lebowski outfit, but I didn't know it was that appropriate. So, yes, I have one.
You've threatened that before.
Okay, closing in the public comments. This was, norms and values was actually the Vice Mayor's idea. So, comments?
Yeah, I firmly believe that we have to at least proclaim that this is how we want to act. And I know that just having in the norms and values won't assure it, but I think it'll help. And so, I think we need to explicitly state it, because the district elections do have that downside that people could be parochial on it. But I actually believe that it's very important for the public to actually make sure they elect people who embody the right set of values. That's key. And that we can ask the people who are running for election whether they are going to, you know, look at it from the whole of the city, or whether they're going to be just from their one area. And we should hope, and that's all we can do, but we put it into the norms and values and make sure it's what we ascribe to as a community, and then do the best we can to elect good people.
Any comments? So, Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate what staff has done in terms of researching, what other folks have implemented in their own cities. I agree with Vice Mayor, and I think I cautioned us earlier, a few months ago, that this district elections in some of the other communities in California lead to the parochialism that we're trying to avoid here. And so, I think, again, to the Vice Mayor's point, writing it down and making sure that we all understand what the norms and values are for all of us up here will be a step in the right direction. Because I do know that one of the concerns that many of the people have spoken about this issue early on was that they hoped we, as a body up here, would continue to serve the city as a whole and not just focus on each of our individual districts. And I think this will go a long way in terms of supporting that notion. And I have every expectation that each one of us up here today and any of the future folks that'll be elected will follow through on that, because I think that's what all of us are about, is this community and serving it and not an individual district. So, I certainly, again, applaud the staff for doing the research and pulling up an example. I think Santa Maria looks like they've done a good job, and look forward to implementing what they've put together and maybe having a discussion about what else we might consider to add to that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper?
I just, yeah, I appreciate adding Santa Maria's point of view there, because it did give us a place to start. I don't know that we needed much of one, but, because I think we're all, we listen to everybody no matter what we do, mostly because we're at large right now. And I don't know, future generations of council members, how that will work unless we somehow put this in writing, that this is how we behave. This is what our values are, is to treat the city, no matter where our district is, that we approach it that way, that we're able to help somebody from eight miles away, if they're in the city and they want my attention, I want to give it to them. And I think anybody who runs for council that doesn't think that way, I think this will help to reinforce that, that we use that as a standard for our behavior up here. And thank you for putting this on the agenda.
Councilmember Spadowski?
Yeah, thank you for finding the example. I think it's a great example to use. Set some policy that council members can refer to, and in particular, candidates. I'm the only northerner up here. I'm the only one that lives north of 580. And, you know, I'm constantly asked, "When are we going to get a grocery store?" "Okay, that's not the grocery store I wanted," or, you know, any number of issues. "What about Springtown? What about the over crossings?" And I can see during an election season where it will be very tough for people from certain districts to say, you know, "Here's how things operate." Now, this gives them something to refer back to. So, I think it's very good to provide some written guidelines and just remind people, because it is tough. I mean, people expect, "Hey, you're from my neighborhood. Where's all the stuff?" And it just doesn't work that way. You know, good luck working with Caltrans on the over crossings. That's, you know, you think downtown takes a while. It's like, oof, try meeting with Caltrans any day of the week. There's usually 30 people in the room. But anyway, yeah, so I think this is a great idea. I'm glad it was brought up, and we're trying to address and anticipate things ahead of time.
Okay. Again, I really liked the work that you guys did on this. Santa Maria has some great, great points. The city council will govern on an at-large basis, considering the needs and interests of the entire community, and the fact that customer service is the priority, and that's what we do. And we all, you contact any one of us, and that's one of the things here is, it doesn't matter what district we're in, we will each step up to help all of our constituents. I made this quote earlier, but I still think that it's very important, because it speaks to what the city council does. I'm going to take a little bit of liberties. This was Edmund Burke, and he was speaking of parliament, but it just as well applies to the council. So, "The city council is not a Congress of ambassadors from different and hostile interests, which interests each must maintain as an agent and advocate against other agents and advocates. But the city council is a deliberative assembly of one city. Not local prejudices ought to guide. We have one interest, that of the whole, and we seek the general good resulting from the general reason of the whole. You choose a member indeed, but when you have chosen him, he is not a member of a district. He is a member of the city council." And that's the norms and values that we're trying to create here, is that we will commit to serving the entire city and not just serving only our relative neighborhood. So, with that, I'd, let's see, we're receiving the report and providing direction. So, do you have, do we need to make a motion to receive the report?
You don't need to make a motion. What we would like is essentially next steps on this. So, if indeed the general format that we've placed in front of you is acceptable, then the question is, when would you like to return with your amended norms and values for your consideration? It could be as soon as your next meeting, or in coordination with when you actually review your norms and values after the beginning of the year. So, those would be sort of the two questions we'd have. Are we close enough to write something down and add it to your current, and then when do you want to see it?
The pleasure of the council.
I guess I would normally, I would say just wait until the normal process. But it's also, if you said, if you believe it's close enough, we can just add it. Why not? And then, we put it to bed.
Well, we're going to review in January anyway, right?
Yes. So, I got a question back to my question, so let's try that one more time, which is, if the direction is, we'd be happy to bring it with your norms and values, and we would incorporate as a first step, what's in this document as your beginning point, and you can review it at that time and make any appropriate adjustments.
Yeah, I think that's good, because at that point, we will have gone through the next council election. There will be at least one new council member here. And so, I think that would be an appropriate time to bring that up and finalize that, because that will be what drives the council for the next two years, up until our first district election.
Yeah. And the more work for future councils, the better. I have a list of 23 matters initiated tonight, you know, everything after January. So, just bear with me.
Right. Okay, moving right along. Okay, all right. So, is that sufficient direction for staff at this point? All right, and let's see. All right, moving on to 6.02, and that's discussion and direction on establishing a homelessness subcommittee. And so, we had talked about this in the last meeting, and to how to continue to move ahead to resolve some of the issues that we've been grappling with for a while. And we have, Claudia Young is back.
So, good evening, Mayor, council members. During the October 8th council meeting, Councilmember Warner requested for staff to look into the formation of a homeless subcommittee. The three items that you required was to refine data metrics, identify questions that may be implemented on the next county homeless point-in-time count survey, and develop key goals and discussion topics for the next mayor's homeless summit. So, your timing is perfect, because the county is gearing up for their homeless count. So, if we were to put the subcommittee together now and work through what data metrics we want to look at and maybe add to the homeless count, then that would be timely. The homeless count is done in January. So, if we could look at the homeless, I mean, sorry, the data metrics, and complete those maybe around December, they'd be ready to go with the point-in-time count survey for January. And that would then give us some information to discuss at the homeless summit. So, if you have any questions?
Questions for staff at this point?
When's the homeless summit?
Pardon me?
When's the homeless summit planned?
I would say it would be timely to do it maybe around the spring, after we have some information from the homeless count.
Okay, okay.
I think once we have the count, it'll give us a good opportunity to start gearing up for that as well. Any further questions at this point? Okay. I have three cards, Greg Scott, Nancy Bankhead, and Carl Winty. Mr. Scott?
Waiting and waiting. No one can wait, but the homeless can wait and wait and wait. Yeah, until what? Until death, and then problem solved, right? I have an idea for Livermore. Livermore is big on events, which is night out, Taste of Livermore. How about Give Me No Shelter Night? Yeah, like a Saturday night. It might take all Sunday to recover from this, but Livermoreans could put on their tank tops and their shorts and their flip flops. The nights are nice and cool now. Come out for all night long and contemplate why housing or shelter is not on a safety net list, or contemplate the constrictions on funding and unexpended funds. And no worries, because eventually, there'll be a sunrise. You just have to be patient. No problem there. And you don't have to worry about logistics too much either, like bathrooms. I mean, the homeless seem to figure out no bathroom, so that'll be easier for you. And there could be, like, mindful meditation circles as people are shivering all night trying to figure this out. Just have patience on it. Yeah. Regional problem, it is a regional problem, but if you, as the presentation at Homeless Services Commission, the homeless population in Livermore is 4.2% of the homeless population in Alameda County. Well, it's not an outsized problem for Livermore, because in a county of over 1.5 million, Livermore is certainly a higher percentage of population than 4.2%. So, it's not really an outsized population. It's based on the general population resources. You all unanimously, except for Dr. Carling, Councilman, Dr. Carling wasn't here on the late, on the last meeting in September, unanimously approved Consent Item 4.08, $2.65 million for the land of Vineyard 2.0. Well, if you take the point-in-time count of the county of Alameda, divide 2.65 million by 243, that's over $10,900 per homeless person. Wow. The mayor in that same meeting gave the figure for the Department of, excuse me, the City of San Francisco Department of Homelessness budget of $241 million. I find that credible. As one commentator said, "It's a lot of money to be turning San Francisco into a toilet." And if you want to go see a site, well, 300 block of Hay Street, but watch out for the needles and the human waste. I mean, it's a disaster. So, money, just spending money is not the answer. I mean, it's a disaster, so money, just spending money is not the answer. It just, yeah, it's a regional problem, it's a global problem, but you see somebody dying on the ground, it doesn't get any more local than that. And if you're not on the right track, you could just spend money endlessly here.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Nancy Bankhead, Carl Winty.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bankhead. Grew up in Livermore, very sheltered life, I think, compared to the homeless. I went to the homeless workshop, found out how ignorant I am about the homeless and the problems they have. My suggestion to, was go to Home Depot, get some blocks, build a bathroom. My thing was, they should have a bathroom. She says, oh no, we can't do that, because you can get raped, you can get murdered, you can get beat up in a bathroom at night with somebody going in, being in there, and you go in there. And I went, oh my goodness, I wouldn't even think about that. You have to have a bathroom, I think that has to have an opening on the bottom, so you can put a camera in there to see what's going on. I mean, there's all these things that I, who have a home, doesn't understand. And it's not a problem that can be dealt with very quickly, unfortunately. I'm sorry, we don't have the resources or the knowledge. I think the knowledge is the big thing here, and that's what you've got a wonderful person here, working for the city, trying to teach us what's going on. And going to that workshop really opened my eyes. And, you know, me, I think that having a bathroom at night is just very cool and neat to have, but the homeless don't have that. The homeless don't and can't have that, or don't, I don't know what the word is. But we need to figure out an answer. And when you tell me you're building a bathroom in the park in the downtown Livermore, who's going to get hurt in that in the middle of the night? Who's going to go lock that up and open that in the morning? Because they had to close our post office that was open 24 hours a day, because people were living there. So there's all these little facts that you don't even think about till you go to a workshop like you guys are having right now to educate people. You need more people to go to those things and learn what's going on with our homeless, and what the city can do to help them. It's a huge, huge problem. There are different types of homeless. It's just amazing what's out there that is, we don't see. I don't see. Actually, I do see them in the creeks in front of Home Depot and Walmart and stuff. They're living there. They're living at US Bank, they're living on Second Street, not they. People are living in there. I saw a lady taking a bath at the fountain in front of Carden G Building. Hey, that's clean water. I mean, she's, that's a good place to take a bath if you're homeless. But, you know, there's no showers, there's no nothing. And Claudine is working with four bases, four church-based things, that maybe they can work on. Okay, it's a big problem.
Carl Winty and Brent Seiler.
Oops, yeah, thank you, council staff. And it clearly is a problem, and it clearly is a growing problem. Mr. Scott, I've thanked you many a times for getting up here and speaking that passion, that truth, and just continuing to be part of the solutions. And I encourage, however the bureaucracy of getting unallocated monies to be spent, block and tackle for these people, right? They're simple, like when you're hungry, like getting food out there. Like, I saw a good friend of mine, like every time he goes into a store, there's a homeless guy there, he walks out and hands him a sandwich. I thought, what a stupidly easy thing to do, and doing it every time. Not making a huge difference, but it's that mentality of the simplicity. People are hungry, get food. People are cold, it's to the blankets, the safe place to park, working with the churches the otherwise. So they're not harassing the cars, getting towards the showers to be able to clean up the beds. I'm pointing out problems, not solutions. I realize this is the case, but, you know, getting towards practical ways to put that money to work to help elevate people out of this. Mr. Scott, again, I salute you. Mr. Seiler, I also salute you for getting in there, talking through this, working through it, and I believe you have practical solutions to bring to this. Like, I don't know what this subcommittee is going to be there, but I would say that Mr. Scott and Mr. Seiler have something to offer to this one, to come up with practical solutions to make the city a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winty. Brent Seiler.
Mayor, council. First, I'd like to thank you for the presentation and opportunity that we got to meet with everybody a few weeks ago. It was very informative, very helpful. You know, I've spent a little bit, right around 18, maybe a little bit, 19 months, going down, meeting with people in the Arroyo, in the creeks, getting to know them by name. And pretty much what Mr. Scott's talked about, I get it now, the assimilation, belonging, and contribution. There's a lot of people that desire that. I've also looked at it and said, there's about five tiers of people that we got to work with, and there are tiers that we can work with right away that will help get them to a point where they can be self-sufficient and not be dependent on the city, to help them with stuff. And I think it's important that, as you've said a lot of times, Mr. Mayor, about focusing on things that we need to do, kind of honing our objectives, and trying to help those who we can help the quickest. And, Ms. Bankhead, I agree, there, it's a big problem. There are people that we're not going to be able to reach out to, there's not going to be people that we can help. There's going to be people who say, I don't want it. And I've met those people. You know, cheekily, I've said, you know, you can kind of tell the people that live down by Coles, kind of the upper-class homeless, because they do try to distance themselves from people that do do drugs, they do have addictions. I spoke with Josh over at Supervisor Hagerty's office, trying to understand what they're doing, and how could we get benefit from the county and help with this? And it is something that, both at a county level, I've determined that they have interest in it. So if there's an opportunity that Mr. Scott, who I think has probably the most experience with homelessness, if there's an opportunity that he would be willing to serve on a subcommittee, I think he would be a great asset to that subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seiler. Okay, so with that, I'm going to close the public comment period, and this is something that we think about every day, and trying to find solutions to this. Four years ago, I convened the first-ever mayor's summit on homelessness, to bring the region together to try to leverage the resources that were out there to solve this regional problem. And several years ago, I appointed a subcommittee at that time, and the idea was to go out and do a survey, a survey of the homeless. We found out that, at that time, 40% of the homeless in Livermore had family in Livermore, but they just couldn't live with their family. So these are very difficult problems that we're grappling with. So the time has come to have another survey, to have another summit, and to start to drive that conversation. I think we need to have a subcommittee from the council to really, to start that focus. And I'd like to tap Vice Mayor Warner, because you were instrumental in the first survey, and someone who is also very passionate about human service, and that would be Dr. Carling. So if the two of you would be willing to step up and serve on that subcommittee, I would greatly appreciate it. Okay. With that, I'll leave the, all the rest of the details up to you guys, but...
I, you know, gladly want to serve on this again, and I think there's sort of the range of, well, what actually can we do to understand the situation, get the better data in, arranged in a way that we can actually do something that's actionable? And that's one thought here. The other one was, I was in Sausalito a couple of weeks ago in a restaurant, and I just noticed in the corridor, in the bulletin board, there was a flyer from an experimental program from the, I believe it was the Police Department, that had portable shower units. So I think there's an opportunity to look around at other cities, not just within the Tri-Valley, but, and not, I don't mean necessarily San Francisco or Berkeley, because they've got a different magnet, scale, you know, order of magnitude here. But there are other things that people are trying, that I think we could just look to and see to what extent it could happen here. So there's a range of things that I think we could be very helpful as a subcommittee to suggest and to help with.
Dr. Carling?
Yeah, I'd be glad to serve on it, and I appreciate Mr. Scott's time that he spends speaking to us, and I, you know, I wish we all had easy solutions that were more expedient than the ones that we've been talking about. And I look forward to, again, as Vice Mayor mentioned, look forward to taking advantage of what other communities have done and seeing what we can do, and that we could incorporate pretty quickly, and help, maybe not everybody out there, but at least a few that would benefit from the subcommittee. Because I do think it's more than just gathering metrics and prepping for the summit that would come in the spring. So we need to, we need to make some real changes and make some real difference to the people that are out there.
So I would also like to point out is that, you know, the subcommittee is, you know, of the council, but what we would do is reach out to the community and get as much input as we can, working with the, you know, our Human Services Department. So that's the way it'll work. As opposed to a, I guess it would be formally called an advisory committee, where it would be different. But I think we'll get started and then see what happens.
Okay. And just to highlight the fact that, because people talked about food and showers and the like, and there are a number of programs here in Livermore. Open Heart Kitchen does a remarkable job. We have Asbury Methodist, and Vineyard Christian Fellowship, and Cornerstone, provide showers, provide clothing, and limited resources. But once again, we have the faith-based community, which is stepping up to really do a remarkable job to help people in Livermore, and really throughout the region. I was at Vineyard not long ago, and talked to a couple of young men that had found their way to Livermore from Detroit, and from Louisiana, and they ran out of resources when they got to Livermore. And there were people here in Livermore that were, that were standing up and helping them. So this is something that we all are working to resolve. It's not going to be easy, but you've got our commitment that we will continue to work on this, and continue to serve our community. All right? Well, thank you. Thank you for volunteering, thanks for being voluntold to serve, so, thank you. Okay, with that, moving on to matters initiated and councilmember reports.
So much to report out. We opened the Railroad Depot the other day, last weekend. It was a great event that was, to put the depot back into business again. It's been a long time since it's been out where the railroad tracks used to run. We had a great time opening it, looking, learning more about it from a historical point of view, and the big, the big sell for me was one double deadheader going by on the Union Pacific Lions blasting his horn as he went by us. All it was, it was great, yeah, he was pulling no cars, but both of them blasting, I was really, really, really good. Yeah, I had nothing much else to report. I would like to say, though, this Sunday, next Sunday, the 28th, at the library, if you have not either been to a film festival and seen Four Wheel Bob, or seen it on PBS, Four Wheel Bob will be showing at the library, 2:00 PM, October 28th, and I hope you're all able to be there. Those do remain. Thank you.
All right, very good. Councilor Carling?
Yes, thanks. October 10th, several of us celebrated with the staff employees for a barbecue, which was a great fun, held in the barn, and the barbecue was delicious. I also went later in that afternoon, October 10th, to a community monitoring committee, of which I sit with colleague from Pleasanton, members from the Sierra Club and so on, looking at the landfill and making sure that they're operating that thing efficiently and cleanly. On the 11th, I had a meeting at Stop Waste, which is over in Oakland. 16th, the mayor and I participated in a ribbon-cutting at Hobson Sessions, a new taproom in Livermore that's an interesting approach to serving beer and food. So if you're looking for another place to go...
It's a self-serve beer bar, what we all dreamed of in college.
It's not free, but it's self-serve, right?
Self-serve.
Yeah. With what?
With lemons.
With lemons, yeah, it costs you, it's not free. I do want to, one of the, Ms. Naylor spoke about her enthusiasm for what's changed on Springtown, and was interested in what's sort of next, and how they can help with raising funding. This is under the purview of LARPD, though, is, am I right about that?
The land is owned by the City of Livermore. The master plan was completed by LARPD. Moving forward, ultimately, it would be a partnership between the two entities.
How do we, how do we take advantage of her enthusiasm about raising funding? Do we ask her to connect with LARPD, or what?
I think probably the most effective way would be to have her connect with us, and then we should all connect with LARPD ultimately, and at a staff level, begin the process of talking about next steps.
So could somebody from the staff connect with Ms. Naylor and...
We'll see if we have any contact information from her, or if people know of her contact information.
I don't, so...
I can get that.
You can. But I think we should follow through, I mean, here's somebody that's enthusiastic about helping, and we're not to...
...this project for...
Oh, she has, okay. Oh, well, that's, okay, okay, good. Well, that's the first time I've seen her here to speak to us, so... And over the next weeks before the election, how are we going to get more information out about Measure U? I think we're going to have more mailers about Measure U, or not? No? Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilor Spadowski?
And I can get that contact information. As you know, everybody north of the freeway, we all know each other, have each other's phone numbers, it's a very close-knit group. No, I have, the only report out is TVTC, Tri-Valley Transportation Council, last week. Nothing to really report there. I would like to build on Councilmember Carling's comments. After the Springtown area was recently re-landscaped, there was a vast majority of public comments online about how nice it is now. The lack of goose droppings, the benches, one pointed towards Mount Diablo and one towards Brushy Peak. People, I think, there, it was a very nice job, very well done, and now people want more. So that's kind of the balancing act that we have now, where people are getting excited and saying, hey, let's make the rest of it look this way. So I'm glad, and kudos, I believe staff did kind of an in-house design, got out the heavy equipment, had fun placing boulders, but it's a really nice job, so thank you, and I look forward to seeing people advocate for more development on that site. But other than that, I have no matters initiated tonight. I will be saving them all up for the 26th.
All right. Vice Mayor Warner?
I'd like to start, I guess, with matters initiated, and just build on that. The request was specifically for the winter coming up for gravel, for the paths. Is that something that we could at least look into as to what it would take? And maybe there's something reasonable that could be done, just to get something started? Because I think the final plan is going to cost a lot and take a while. So maybe there's some gravel we could do, perhaps?
We could at least look into that and get a memo back to you, and if we could essentially get direction at that point.
Right. And then that's the case of where people could maybe also help fund it and everything else. But I think that was, that seemed like a really good request, just to be able to make it more walkable in the winter. So then, the other parts on, you know, reports out is, like, it just seems like a lot of parties, right? So we had the staff barbecue, we had the depot opening, and then the... And then the mayor and I went to the Interfaith Housing 50th Anniversary, and gave, that was a very nice event. And I think it's really pretty cool. We, with the Stockman's Park, we did the 100th Anniversary of the Stockman's Rodeo Association. We've got the, and that park enabled us to get new housing for the, for the Interfaith Housing setup, on their 50th anniversary. And I think it was also the 20th Anniversary of Arbor Vista, which is right over there. So all of these round number anniversaries, and it's all coming together. And I think one of the other things that was pointed out in the, in the event, was one person spoke about the time it takes between projects, and it's measured in decades. And I think, I'm hopeful that we've actually turned the corner, because I think it was pointed out by staff in the last meeting that we have 1,000 housing units in stock, and then we've got 500 in the pipeline in the last few years. And on the deal with respect to just down the street here, it was mentioned a year ago in July, and now we're, we've got plans for it, they're being drawn up, and we're going. So I think we're actually making significant progress here, and I hope to see it continue.
Honorable Mayor, unusually, your city manager has a report, so either before or after you. You actually passed a resolution on July 9th of this year, and you directed, you authorized the city manager to take certain actions, and you also directed the city manager to report back to you if he actually took any of those actions. So pursuant to that, you passed Resolution 2018-107, you authorized the city manager to award a construction contract for the 2017 Storm Damage Debris Removal Project, and directed that any action taken by the manager be reported at the next regular council meeting. And please be advised that your city manager executed the construction contract on August 15th. And furthermore, work began on September 11th and was completed by October 15th, all consistent with what was in that staff report.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so on October 11th, I attended the LAFCO, the Local Agency Information Commission Public Policy Committee. We talked about spheres of Influence and the budget. And moving on to the 13th was the Art Walk in the downtown, where we had several hundred artists and a number of thousands of people enjoying our downtown. On the 18th was the Dream Makers and Risk Takers, which is put on by the Innovation Tri-Valley folks. There were a couple of high school students that had developed a phone app to determine the progress as high school students were being, were going through school, their progress of meeting their requirements, keeping track of their volunteer hours, keeping track of their work hours, so they could generate letters of recommendation afterward. And this was developed by high school kids. There was another young lady, 17 years old, a filmmaker, who wrote a script, directed and produced a short film, and was accepted at Cannes. Yeah, so, wow, okay, so you're 17 years old and your film's at Cannes. Where do you go from here? Yeah, so Dream Makers and Risk Takers talk about a remarkable uplifting program, where you see all these young people out there doing truly remarkable things. That was followed by a TV 30 board meeting, where we talked about the budget, got an update on the equipment that had been purchased for our new emergency operations center and public meeting facility, and that's on track, and we're looking for great things from that. They did some repairs, so that hopefully we don't sound quite as fuzzy up here as we had previously. They found some, some old connections, and now we should be sounding much better. Also, that same evening, I was at the Livermore Valley Business Awards, and we were recognizing some of the local businesses that are doing remarkable things here, as far as manufacturers. The Wiley X, which makes military-grade eyewear, was awarded the top manufacturer. And our very own EyeGate, our innovation incubator right there on Second Street, was recognized for economic development. It's, we've fledged 10 different businesses out of there recently, brought in over $60 million of venture capital, and created over 200 jobs. And that's a collaboration between four cities in the Tri-Valley, Livermore Pleasanton, Dublin, and Danville. So it just shows what happens when everybody comes together and works together. On the 20th, I was at the competition for the trades. ABC Norcal had the competition, and one of the competitors was a, was the first Pedrosi Scholarship recipient. It was a new effort and a collaboration between the Pedrosi Foundation and ABC Norcal. It turned out Jorge Gonzalez, a Livermore resident, won first place in the electrical competition. So very cool and a great success for Livermore and Pedrosi, and I was able to present the award to him. As was mentioned, Interfaith Housing, what a cool event that was. And with that, we'll close the meeting. And remember, the next meeting is going to be November 26th. Between then and now is the election, so get out and vote. Mr. Seiler?
Can I, just to begin, I have a quick PSA for an organization, or if I could just put it out?
Sorry. Thank, thank you very much, but the meeting's going on. So with that, November 26th, the next meeting, please get out and vote. You can vote by mail, you can put the ballots into the ballot drop box in front of the City Hall, and you can vote in person, which is where I'm going to be. So with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.